This conference will now be recorded.
Thank you Cindy. As I said Julie is not able to join us. She has a recurring Wednesday obligation in the afternoon. So I will call the meeting to order. It is noon on Tuesday, December 2nd, 2020. This is a special meeting of the Economic Development Authority. It is determined that we do have a quorum with members Johnson, DeVos, Abels, Southworth, Dunn, and Faber attending either on video or over the phone. I'd ask is, I need to amend the agenda if you're willing to add a item B under new business COVID micro loan program. And with that change, would anyone make a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
We have a motion by Dunn. Is there, we have a second by Abels. I will just say, any further discussion? All in favor of approval of the amended agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The agenda is approved. In the packet you find the minutes of the October 22, 2020 meeting. Would there be a motion to approve or amend?
Ed will make a motion to approve.
Motion by Johnson. Abels, second. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Thank you gentlemen. We have no unfinished business under new business. The city council had a conversation at their goal session last night about further economic assistance to businesses in the community. As you're all aware, March 30th, the city council adopted the COVID micro loan program to assist certain business sectors that were impacted by the governor's executive orders of the past spring. About 57 loans were made totaling $491,652. Subsequent to making the loans, the council has taken action to forgive those and essentially structure those as a grant with no further repayment obligation. I've got all but four of the businesses have responded with a tax ID number and their acceptance of forgiveness. And I'll be chasing down the other four so we can send, pardon me, the appropriate IRS form. We are actually sending a IRS form for a taxable grant rather than forgiven debt. So the county or the city paid that $491,652 back to the EDA revolving fund using the CARES Act, the federal financing that they received to reimburse the city for COVID related expenses. I think as we, we reported at the last meeting, in actual expenses of the city for sanitation, Plexiglas masks, leave time for employees that were either out with COVID or out with a family member or had been exposed and needed to take some time off. There is about $262,000 that remained and the city council had it discussed putting that into the general fund to basically buy down some police expenses. Those police expenses had been budgeted. So the conversation at the city council meeting was let's try to maybe put some of that money back into play with the local business community rather than pay a pre-budgeted expense. So based upon their conversation, and I, and I told Ed, Brad, and you can join in too if you want to help kind of paraphrase the council's discussion. It was all over the board. But what the city administrator Pravky and finance director Vogel and I kind of gleaned from that is resulted in what we're presenting to you today then. We are proposing, given that the governor's executive order 2099 from the 18th, I believe it was, ordered the closure of bars, restaurants, and limits them again to the takeout curbside service model. There are businesses that are still in need of assistance. Actually, when we announced we were converting to COVID, Tim Grable from hometown bank contacted Todd and I through email and said, is there any thought or any ability to provide further assistance? So we are looking to put that 20 or $200,000 back into play. And we are proposing that, that the access to the, it's called the COVID hospitality assistance program. Access to this would be limited to those that were immediately impacted by that executive order 2099. So bars, fitness and health clubs, restaurants, clubs and lodges, and then public assembly. I have identified, and it is, I think there's a copy in your packet. I've identified about 30 businesses that would be eligible to participate. And if you look at the one that came out this, earlier this morning in the email, I had a couple of errors in the first one. So I've identified 30 businesses within those, those five business sectors. And I certainly may be missing one or two, but I don't have a comprehensive roster. I just kind of use Google Earth and go up and down the highway and up and down the side streets and up and down by the diamond dust area. And so I've identified, as I said, 30, which I would consider to be eligible businesses. Of those 30, 18, 18 did participate in the first round and those were the ones that were colored shaded yellow. But if we were to do a $10,000 in assistance, it's proposed that we would structure that 65% as a grant and then 35% as a loan on the same terms basically of the COVID money. A 0% interest rate deferred repayment beginning on January 1 of 2022. And then the repayment at $100 a month regardless of the amount provided. So if someone took the $35,000 loan and the $65,000, $6,500 grant, they'd have their repayment would be accomplished in just under three years. One thing I've added is that the business must have been open and operational in St. Peter on March 30th. So there are a couple of businesses and reckless and Free Bird Gift Shop, which just recently opened here for the Christmas season. My thought is they had their eyes wide open when they made that choice. So it's been proposed that it be limited to the businesses that were open on March 30th when, when the program was put forward. And as I said, when they would begin repayment, it would be at 0% rate of interest and $100 a month. You see the amended loan policy I sent out. What else did I send out? I didn't have the application completed in there, but yeah, I think I included the resolution. I'm going to open it up for, for comments and discussion on this. And I'm going to start with Mr. Dunn.
So I just want to make sure I understand, because we were given the original loan program specifications. It looks to me that the, one of the big changes that I see is changing the revolving loan shall be utilized to meet current financial obligations language has been changed to meet rent, lease, mortgage utilities.
Yeah, originally it was, oh pardon me James, I'll let you finish.
No, I was wondering, is that one of the, the issues or directives from the city council?
Yeah, that was kind of a conversation of the councils. There should be some documentation of that they have some expenses. So when I have prepared the new application, I based it on, on the COVID micro loan. And so I'm asking them, what is their monthly lease mortgage payment? What are their utilities? I've added actually even security systems because some of them had recurring fees for a security system. I added linen laundry because some of them do have linen or laundry or, or you know, rug service. But the plan may be James is we'd add up those monthly expenses, multiply it by four, and that would be the maximum loan amount. But loans couldn't exceed 10,000.
Would, under the hospitality loan program, would it include those additional costs? Because I'm thinking in terms of, of you know, bars or restaurants that serve alcohol, they may have additional liquor licensing fees. Other sorts of licensing fees that, that might not be fall within the definition of it. It just appears to be very limiting to just lease rental mortgage costs and utilities. There could be some additional, other big costs out there for, for these types of businesses that we might not be anticipating or, or thinking about.
Yeah, of, of the 18 that participated in the first round, every one of them did meet the maximum 10,000 with utilities and lease, all with the exception of the Redmond Club. They came in at like $9,600. And they might not have a mortgage. I don't know, but yeah.
They're just very efficient.
Yeah, and I know that there's been liquor operators that have contacted the city about seeing if they could have a reduction in liquor license fees. I know Mankato did that. I believe Mankato did that. But I think truthfully our fees are about a seventh of what Mankato might be, or certainly much, much less. So I mean, we could certainly add that if others think that that would be appropriate. And what is the liquor?
Otherwise, excuse me, you could just go with liquor liability insurance.
Okay. Other, I'm going to, I'm going to, Ed, you're next anyway on my list. Do you have anything else to add?
Yeah, if you, you know, we, we just figured utilities because obviously we don't have a mortgage on the building. So that's where we came up a little bit short of the 10,000. But you know, you figured liquor liability or the liquor license. You know, I think liquor license are in town in St. Peter are like 1,800 bucks if I remember right. So.
Yeah, well, when, when, if we get to the point where someone is going to propose a resolution, we can, we can suggest adding that as one of the monthly expenses. James, I should have asked her, did you have anything else?
Well, I was just wondering if, as opposed to changing the language to limit it to rent, lease, mortgage, utilities, even if we add the liquor, liquor liability license. If we just basically leave it as it was originally proposed to meet their current financial obligations that can be shown or something like that. Excuse me. If there's a desire to somehow make sure that it's actually going towards the continued operation of the, the business. I don't know. I just thought by just limiting those specified costs, it was very limiting, but maybe, maybe it's not. And hearing Ed, it doesn't sound like it's that big of a deal.
Ed, did you have anything else to add?
No, it's just, and you know, like you said, the only bar I didn't make it was me and we just figured utilities. So you know, and we forgot one of the utilities that we didn't figure in the last time. We forgot to add garbage, I do believe. And it was too late to add that. So we would have been over the $10,000 figure then anyway.
Thanks Ed. Brad?
Overall, I like the, the idea of tying the grant to the loan. As I was talking to Todd, Todd this morning, Nada, this came up. It was on another subject and pointed out the idea of basically making sure people have some skin in the game so they don't just take the grant and run. My thought is limiting it to 10,000 is, while the idea is we're doing this to help the rest bars and restaurants as well as fitness centers because they need more assistance because of the shutdown. But we're only actually overall providing, yes, it's a grant, but we're overall only providing immediately the same amount as everyone else gets at this time. My thought process would be to make them eligible for the full loan of say $10,000. And then they would also on top of that be eligible for a grant of up to 65% of, of the loan taken out. That way they would, that way like the Redmen, Niclet Cafe, they would get additional assistance beyond what the, what the other, what the other entities, the retail outlets in town will get. Essentially, it's the same amount of grant dollars going out because it'd still just be 65% of the eligible. So if they, but you could potentially see someone getting a $10,000 loan and then a $6,500 grant. I think that would go a long ways and the grant dollars wouldn't change that we sent out. And really we'd just be allocating the same amount of loan dollars as we did the spring. So it's just essentially allocating the same amount of money from a loan perspective that we planned on locking up for eight years back in March. Now it's just a seven month deferral. And then we have the grant on top of that. So that'd be my recommendation is that we allow them to take whatever the full loan is based off of utilities and such. And then also then have them eligible for a 65% grant of their eligible loan amount.
So if, so to get the full $6,500 grant, they'd have to take out a $10,000 loan?
Yes. So if they took out, say they were eligible for 10,000, but they only wanted a $5,000 loan, they would only get 65% of the 5,000. For a grant.
So if, if, if they took out a $5,000 loan, they'd be eligible for $3,250 grant?
Yes. So they would get essentially $8,250.
Yes. If they got a $10,000 loan, they'd get a full $6,500 grant?
Yes.
Okay.
Corey? In that scenario, with, with that scenario, would it most businesses who qualify for the 10,000, take the full 10,000 to get the 6,500? And then when it comes time to start paying it back, they can pay it off in full?
I, I would say, I would say business.
I don't see a reason why a business, if a business would actually, I understand what you're saying Brad, and I disagree with it. I think that's a good idea. But I think that if in that scenario, most businesses, if they can come up with the, the formula to show that they can get the full 10,000 in order to get the 6,500 grant, they're going to take the full 10,000. That $5,000 stereo will never come into play.
Oh yeah, no, I'm saying that. I'm just saying the 65. So basically the grant would just be 65% of whatever. So yeah.
Yeah. Most times people are going to take the full 10,000 whether they need it or not. If you can always pay, if it's no interest, they can pay it back whenever. So.
I, my opinion is, if someone, my opinion is someone offers you no interest loan that you defer for a year and then have eight years to pay off, you take it. So, but yeah, that, that would be, I would expect people to take the full loan and then take the full grant money on top of it.
Corey, actually you were next on my list.
Must have turned his camera off.
Yeah, now you're breaking up Corey. We really can't hear you now.
Not a better, my, the one.
You're, you're chopping. I'm going to go to, oh Corey, yeah, try it without your, your, your camera. Corey? I'm going to let you get that worked out and I'm going to move on to Bob because we can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yep, I can hear you now. Give that a try. I think we might have lost him. Bob?
All right. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. I guess I, I, I like the program. I just, I, I agree with Brad that I think the businesses that are shut down right now need more help than the other businesses. That's just my opinion. I would think that would be the case. And I know in your, your email, you said that the council wanted to open it up to the sectors that were eligible in the first round. Was the first round the hospitality stuff? And then the second round was all the other businesses initially?
No, originally the, the access to the micro loan was limited to certain business sectors. But from time to time, the council expanded that. So they had a request from the birth center. So they added birth centers. There was a request from one of the dentists. So then they added dental and chiropractic. They added auto repair services. They added the business to business bookkeeping and accounting services. So later on, we'll be talking about reestablishing that loan program to, to the businesses that had previously been eligible with the exception of those now that would be eligible for the hospitality that has the grant component.
So do we, I know we have this money and initially when we first did it back in March or April, there wasn't a grant. No one right away. Is there a reason we're doing that now?
Pardon me?
When we initially did this loan back in the spring, you know, it wasn't portrayed as a grant. Ended up doing it because we had that CARES money.
Exactly, exactly. So we truly intended that they would be loans, but when we had the CARES money and we determined that there was, there was the ability to do this while still paying the other cities COVID, the council made that decision. Now there is Bob, a possibility that, that there will be additional CARES money provided to the governments or, or assistance from the Minnesota legislature. You know, there's been talk about a HEROES Act. And so these at some point may be converted to grants, but we can't, you know, we can't say that at this point. But yeah, originally they, they were loans.
We're committing the 65% of it as a grant.
Well, under Brad's scenario, it would be about 40% would be a grant. So again, if you took the full $10,000 loan under Brad's proposal, you'd be eligible for the full $6,500 grant.
Right.
6,500 is about 40% of 16,500.
Just for the ones that are shut down can get that amount?
Just the, the bars, the restaurants, fitness clubs, clubs and lodges and public assembly like, like the Capitol Room.
Right, okay.
Or Johnson Hall.
Okay. Was there a?
Hold on Sally. Finish up Bob.
Was there businesses that are not shut down currently right now that were kind of requesting this round again?
Not necessarily. You know, of course, when the council converted grants, there were some that didn't participate in the loan program that then wanted to get a loan to get a grant. And we did not reopen it to those few businesses. Both of those did receive the CARES Act funding from the county on their program. But I would guess they, they likely would be eligible for the loan program. Well, one would be eligible for the grant program because it was the nutritional place. But the other one was a retail store.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, I think I just would be, I don't know. I just feel more that the businesses that are shut down, that's the immediate need right now, but maybe I'm wrong. So.
Yeah, under Brad's proposals, the ones that are shut down now would be eligible for up to 16,500 in assistance of which then the 6,500 would not need to be repaid. And so they'd repay the, the 10,000 at $100 a month beginning January 1.
I guess I would be in favor of doing the loans, but just committing to granting money to the businesses that have been shut down. The other ones would be our 0% loan or whatever, but that's, that's what I had an opinion I got. So.
Yeah, that's exactly what the recommendation is. So like the retail people, they'd be eligible for up to a $10,000 loan. Because we proposed to reopen the COVID micro loan program to them for a second round.
But they're not getting granted the 65%?
Not the retail places here, what, what are the?
Okay, so it's just, they're shut down now that are offered that grant?
That were impacted by last Thursday's governor executive order. So under the other program, hotel motel, studio gallery, retail sales, daycare, cultural services, salons, spas, barbers, dentists, chiropractors, auto repair and business to business bookkeeping, they'd be eligible for the COVID micro loan program that, that we'd offered before.
Okay.
And so yeah, we're asking you to have two separate programs, one for those immediately shut down and the other one for all the other businesses, sectors. Anything else Bob?
Nope.
You'll have another opportunity too. Sally, you had something to add.
So if we go with Brad's proposal, had 16,500, do the businesses have to show that that's what their four months of more, of expenses would be then?
No, it would just be an additional, they would have to show the four months, get them to 10,000. And then the 65% would just be additional on top of that to assess because everyone is getting, everyone gets to the 10,000. And what, whether retail or, I shouldn't say everyone gets to it, but everyone is eligible to get to 10,000. But this is supposed to be additional assistance on top of that is my thought. Because these have a greater need. So I would say they wouldn't have to show in four months that they can get to 16,500.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify. Okay.
That's just my thoughts. Other people might feel differently, but that's just my thoughts. So.
Corey, did we get you operational again? I saw your, your photo was up there for a while. Well, Corey left a message and, oh. He's typing. Yep. All right. Yeah. Corey added to the chat. His recommendation is, you know, we, we said the business had to be open and operating on March 30th. Corey's recommending that that be moved back to January 1 of 2020 because there is a couple, you know, startup months before you get fully operational. We had Bob. Mike Faber?
Yeah, just a clarification. I think I know the answer to this. So just under your original proposal as presented now before Dave's modification or amendment. If, if somebody wanted just $5,000 in the form of a loan, then the maximum grant right now then would be 3250, correct? So it's, it's just proportional to the loan amount, correct?
That's how I understood it. Yep.
Okay.
Brad is shaking his head yes, Mike.
So then I, I, I support and you know, that, that proposal.
Okay. We've gone through once. I'm going to go through one more time and start again with James. Nothing. He's shaking his head. Ed?
The only question I have, would that, they applied for the loan and then that grant would be automatic? Or was there two applications?
No, the grant would be automatic. They'd apply for the loan document at least 10,000 to get the $6,500 grant.
Okay. I don't see a problem with it.
Brad?
Um, I, I don't have anything. Like I said, the only thing is, is basically it leaves us allocating same amount of grant dollars as we expected. And it just puts us back in the same, where we were in March with the loan. So that's why I thought that'd be a good way to go. So.
Okay, very good. Corey, he said nothing else in his chat. When we vote Corey, I'm going to want to have give a, you're going to have to give a thumbs up or something for an a. So Bob?
I'm good.
And Mike?
I know, just a correction and an apology to Brad calling him Dave. I know Dave DeVos and I just, yeah. So sorry about that.
It's so funny. Brad was sharing before the meeting that at his last job, someone called him Kevin and that became his nickname. So.
Okay. I don't feel so bad then.
No. Thanks Mike.
On that. Yep, that's it.
So the resolution that I prepared would need to be amended. And I certainly can't get that and send it out to you. But I would propose that where it says 65% of the assistance shall be in the form of a grant and 35 of the assistance shall be in the form of a loan. I will change that to reflect Brad's, Brad's suggestion that they apply for the loan and then the grant will be applied at 40%. Does that make sense? It's, it's not exactly the language it's going to be, but I think everybody understands Brad's intent if Brad's going to make a motion.
So wait, can you repeat that again Russ?
That, that they'd apply for the, the loan and that would be, that would determine what they'd get for the grant on how much they qualify as a loan. So if they only qualified for a $7,000 loan, they would get a reduced, they wouldn't get the full $6,500.
Yeah. So basically a loan, a loan qualifies them for a grant, an additional grant of 65% of, of the loan amount.
Okay.
So in addition to the loan, they would be given a grant of 65% of the loan amount.
Yeah, that works too. Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
I would make that motion as Brad just said, along with having the start date be January 1st, 2020.
Okay. So that was a motion. Would there, anyone be willing to second the motion?
DeVos will second.
We have a motion and a second. It's appropriate that we go through and have a conversation one more time and let people discuss the motion. And I'll start with Ed. We have a motion and a second, it's appropriate that we go through and have a conversation one more time and let people discuss the motion, and I'll start with Ed.
I have nothing, sounds good to me.
Sure, um, Brad?
Nothing for me.
Corey? Uh, Bob?
Nothing, just when the, the businesses are applying, that you make sure they understand whether they qualify for the grant under this term or not. You know, it's, it could be confusing to some, but just so they know before they sign the, or take out the loan.
Sounds good, thank you, Bob. Mike?
I'm good.
And, uh, James?
I'm good too.
Okay, I will call the roll call, and I'll start with the member DeVos.
Hi.
Member Abels?
Hi.
Member Southworth?
Hi.
Member Faber?
Hi.
Member Dunn?
Hi.
Member Johnson?
Hi.
Thank you, gentlemen. The, the other proposal then would be that we reopen the COVID microloan program. That's the program that we'd offered beginning on, um, March thirtieth, um, and calling it, uh, COVID microloan round two. Um, the businesses eligible would be the same that were eligible, um, in the last go around of the COVID microloan. So again, hotel motel, studio gallery, retail sales, daycare, uh, cultural services, salas, spas, barbers, dentist, chiropractors, auto repair and business to business, bookkeeping and accounting services. Um, they would be eligible basically for the ten, up to a ten thousand dollar loan at zero percent with repayment deferred until January one of twenty twenty-two. So it would essentially be the same terms of the COVID microloan program we put out before. Um, and, uh, the only change I had made that they would have to be operational by March thirtieth of twenty twenty, and I think we could reasonably change that to say January one of twenty twenty to be consistent with the other program. Um, are there any questions on, on this program? I, I tell you, I'm gonna go through once really quick, and, and I'm gonna start with Corey. Nothing? Bob?
No.
No? Uh, Mike?
No questions.
Uh, James?
No questions.
Ed?
No questions.
Brad?
Um, no questions, just a comment that I think you might wanna make sure you emphasize to people that there is no guarantee that this will be forgiven like the last program was. I think that just important to that, that people realize that there's no guarantee in this one, so, even though the last one was, so.
I will, I will make that clear before they sign documents, but, um, I don't know if it's likely, but it certainly could happen. Um, so, um, I think that was everybody going through. Uh, there is a resolution that was, that was emailed out to you earlier this morning um, that would reopen the COVID nineteen microloan to the business sectors that were eligible last time, uh, with the exception of those that are eligible for the grant program. Um, maximum loan of ten thousand based upon their monthly expenses times four. Uh, loans at zero percent, uh, rate of interest, a hundred dollar a month repayment beginning January one of twenty twenty-two. Um, then if it's a daycare, in-home daycare, what they do is they tell me, um, what percent of the house is occupied by the daycare operations, and then their monthly get, get multiplier, yeah, multiplied by that percentage, given that, uh, they have combined business, uh, expense and, and household expense. Would anyone be inclined to move the resolution?
Ed will move the resolution.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Southworth.
We have a second by Southworth. Uh, be appropriate to go through and have a conversation one more time, and I'll start with Abels.
No, nothing.
Southworth?
No.
Faber?
Nothing.
Dunn?
I just wanna make sure that our, we all agree that the start of the language would be that the business would have been in operation on January first of twenty twenty, right? That's what we're talking about? Okay, that's, no other questions.
Okay, um, Ed?
No questions.
Brad?
Uh, nothing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, I will call the roll call, and I will start with member Southworth.
Hi.
Uh, member Faber?
Hi.
Member Dunn?
Hi.
Member Johnson?
Hi.
Member DeVos?
Hi.
Member Abels?
Hi.
Very good, motion passed. Um, the city council is going to, uh, have a special meeting on Monday. Uh, they were already going to assemble in a workshop, but they're gonna hold a special meeting so they can knock this off and we can, uh, try to hurry and get applications out and, you know, get things turned around. I, I would think if the council approves it Monday, even perhaps by the end of that week, like we did last time, we may be able to uh, be pushing loans and slash loans grants out the door. Um, gentlemen, I didn't have anything else. Uh, I will note that the revolving loan report is in your packet. Um, but I didn't have anything else for the good of the cause. Um, anyone have anything that they would like to address? Would anyone move adjournment?
Ed will make a motion to adjourn.
Motion by Johnson, is there a second? And was that Dunn?
Yes.
The second by Dunn. Uh, all in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, forget it. Um, thank you, gentlemen. At, at this moment, I'm not planning to assemble you on Christmas Eve. Um, and, and so we'll probably, i- if I, we do need a meeting, we might try to shove one in early January or, or try to even preempt and get one, you know, the, early that week of Christmas or the week before, but I don't see anything that's time sensitive that you need to address, um, at this point, so, um, everybody have a wonderful after. Oh, yep.
Russ, could we check, uh, could we just do a check-in to see if we need some time away from our families on Christmas Eve? Maybe we might just do a quick meeting here.
Well, well, see, actually, City Hall is on schedule. City Hall is only open till noon on Christmas Eve, so that's probably, and I am doing my KNUJ radio bit on that morning, so. So, everybody have a wonderful afternoon, be well, be safe, take care of yourself and your family.
See you, guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah.